I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome you to the January 27th County Commission meeting. Remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he could help you with that.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Are there any additions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of January 20th, 2015.
Is there a motion on the minutes?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $527,723.20.
Is there a motion on the bills?
Pay the bills.
What motion? Is there a second? And a second. Any comments on the bills? Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, these bills include $176,000 for Metro 911 and $24,000 in dues to CCOG.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Is there a motion for routine action?
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second for routine action?
Second.
I have a motion, a second on routine action for personnel. Any questions for Kerry? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B is special commission action to reclassify one deputy state's attorney position to a senior trial attorney position and to hire Richard Casey as senior trial attorney, 2317, for the state's attorney's office at $3,658.40 bi-weekly, effective January 29th, 2015. Kerry Dever.
Good morning, Madam Chair, from Human Resources. You're actually looking at three special commission action requests today. I think you have briefing memos on all three items and then the department heads are here to provide any additional information you would like. So with that, I'll turn it over to Erin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Erin McGowan, Minnehaw County State's Attorney. I'm asking the commission to approve this request today. I hope you all saw the terrific piece on Pam TD in the Argus Leader on Sunday's paper. As you know, we lost a 37-year veteran in our office with an infinite amount of experience and wisdom handling our abuse and neglect cases. As you recall, these are cases where there's a potential for termination of parental rights, where our office works closely with Child Protection and DSS to try to get these children back into safe environments. And in my opinion, our responsibility as a county, our most important responsibility is public safety, and there is no more important job than protecting the most vulnerable citizens in our county, our children. This is a major function of our office. It requires the best of attorneys to handle these cases with special expertise. Here we have a uniquely qualified candidate that has over 30 years of litigation experience and specifically 10 years of experience handling these types of cases. That is at a point in his professional career where he's achieved a lot of success in private practice, wants to get back into public service, serve this county in this capacity. Because of the importance of this job and the need of my office to fill this position with somebody that can hit the ground running without years of training to help these children, I would encourage you to approve this request. I stand by for any questions.
Are there any questions for Erin this morning? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
I have a motion. A motion and a second to approve the reclassification of the deputy state's attorney position to a senior trial attorney position. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item B, a special commission action to hire Kim Adamson as finance and budget officer, 239, for the auditor's office at $3,003.20 bi-weekly, effective February 9th, 2015. Bob.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob List from the auditor's office. And today, I'm requesting approval of two personnel-related items. The first request is to hire Kim Adamson as the new finance and budget officer at step nine, which is $78,083.20. This is four steps or approximately 10% of hiring guidelines. I believe this is warranted due to Kim's 25 years' experience in financial analysis, reporting, and account management. Also, after speaking with Kerry Dever, I understand there are market factors impacting salaries for finance positions. The recent salary study reflected that our base wages are closer, close to 10% below similar positions in the private industry. The second request relates to the training of Kim. I anticipate that Darlene Johnson, Assistant County Auditor, will be completing a significant portion of Kim's training, even though Kim's position is technically a higher pay grade. Because of this unique situation, I would like to provide Darlene with temporary additional duty pay of 10% for six months. This would reflect the training time period of Kim's hire date through the preliminary budget. The total cost of this request is approximately $3,200. Admissible for questions.
Any questions for Mr. List? Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, for special action to hire my business and finance officer. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Was that for both of them? Because you just said business and finance officer. Was it for the?
Pass to do.
Item four. Special action will be another motion, I think. Item B, there's another motion here.
That needs to be done separately.
And then I need, needs to be done separately. I need a motion and a second for the special action to approve the 10% temporary additional duty pays.
So moved.
I have a motion. And a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
There are no application for abatement today. The next item is notice and requests. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for Project MC255BR-14, the bridge structure replacement 50-082-110, located on 255th Street between 462nd and 463rd Avenue, approximately four miles north of Hartford. This was deferred from the January 20th meeting. DJ Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. You heard our briefing last week. And just as a quick recap, this project is a bridge replacement on a township road. In our briefing memo, we stated that the average daily traffic count that the highway department took, I think, was five cars per day. And that was an average count over the course of a week that we took that. This bridge project is estimated to cost about $470,000. The map showing the location of the project is included in your briefing memo. One bit of new information that I included with the briefing memo for this week is a attachment that has a map on page two of the briefing memo that shows a map of the county with all of our structures on there. And the small black structures are on our county highways. And the larger structures that are shown with that larger icon in pink color, those are on our township system. And the intent of this graphic is just to show the number of structures that we have on our county system. Out of our 199 structures right now that we have, about 135 of them are on township roads. Several of those are on township roads that have low daily traffic volume, similar to this. And so that just, I think, leads the conversation, more of a philosophical conversation of, today we're considering a notice to bidders for the single project, but there's probably a consideration, or there should be a consideration for the larger issue of these 135 structures on our township system that has been in place for many, many years. And so, there's a quick introduction. There are several people here from the township board and I think some adjacent landowners to this structure. They may have some things that they would like to say. If you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those questions, too.
Are there any questions for DJ first? Commissioner Barth.
DJ, how many bridges within the county, county or township are in distress?
In distress? I can answer that maybe. Distress is a, is a term that might differ from, from you to me. And so we have structurally deficient is a term that is identified by the Federal Highway Administration. And I think right now we have something like 40 structures that are structurally deficient.
Okay.
Okay.
And furthermore, I would say most of those are on the township system. I don't have an exact number.
Any other questions for DJ? Commissioner Kelly?
Do, this had, what, a 12-ton minimum limit?
Let's see. The, the original posting, I don't have that in front of me. The, the most recent bridge inspection was completed just a few months ago.
Okay.
In, in late summer. And the recommended posting after that inspection is 15 tons, 24 tons, and 26 tons.
Okay.
That is a little bit higher than the existing posting is today. As you are aware, over the course of our bridge inspections, one inspector might have different opinions than the next inspector. And they try to make that objective, as objective as possible with the, the rating system that they use for the bridge inspection process. And so, even with that, every inspector might have a little bit different opinion. And his opinion and the calculations that they did, that they provided to us are, it's raised a little bit from what it was today.
So, what I'm curious about is the other bridges that are also in similar condition. Are there any that have a higher traffic count and a lower, and a lower load restriction?
There are some structures on our system that have a higher traffic count and a lower rating.
Why aren't we looking at those instead of this?
Now, those, those two points are not the only things that we consider when we look at a structure replacement. I brought a graphic that I can, that I can pull out and show you. It might be a little bit difficult to see without it being on the computer, having a big display board. But there's something like 20 columns on, on this graphic. And each column has a property of the structures that we look at from our bridge reports that we consider during a replacement selection. And some of the other things that we consider are the functionality of a structure, say the width of the structure, or the length of the structure, the hazard that it might create if it were to fail. The likelihood of a failure is different from one structure type to a next, to the next. For example, this structure is, has got a pony truss, a steel structure that is above grade, above the driving surface, that is susceptible to being hit if it's contacted with a farm tractor or something like that. A lot of our structures that are in poor condition are concrete structures that have concrete bridge beams underneath the driving surface. And those, of course, have no risk of being struck by a tractor. They might be struck by large trees if they're in a, in a stream that has a lot of tree growth upstream. And so, the stream size, we would probably look at doing a poorly conditioned structure on Skunk Creek before we do a poorly conditioned structure on Four Mile Creek, just because Skunk Creek has got a lot, a lot larger flow and might present a higher risk for scaller. And so there's a lot of different things that we consider every time we look at bridge replacements. And this one is honestly, right now, the number two structure that we're looking at for priority. The number one structure, we're trying to work with the township so they can close it, so we can close the road. We have 199 structures that we rate. We don't rate one of them necessarily, because once you get past 30 or 40 of them, they can certainly wait and, and have maintenance done on them rather than replacement. But, but we look very, very closely at these and we're confident with our selection on this structure.
Any other questions for DJ? Commissioner Benega.
DJ, with those 20 columns that you're talking about, how do you rank those? You can't treat all 20 of those columns exactly the same. So what's the most important three or four functions that you're looking at?
The biggest indicator that we look at is a federal sufficiency rating. And, and the federal sufficiency rating is a very complex formula that is meant to take into account a lot of those different columns into one number. And that formula was developed by the, by the federal government. And, and so they're trying to make an, an all-encompassing number that, that gives you a, a quick look at a rating of a structure. And so that's where we really narrow it down first, and then we start looking at those other columns, at the real details of the structure. Some of the columns are, are certain parts of the structure, like the superstructure has a rating, the substructure has a rating, the deck has a rating. And so we'll look at those to see what is the real problem with the structure. In, in this case, there's a lot of problems with the structure. And so it's not just the deck that's giving it a low sufficiency rating. It's the deck and the superstructure and the substructure. So.
Commissioner Benega.
Follow-up question. Of all the bridges that you have on your report in this 20-column status report, if you will, based on your budget for 2015, how many of those bridges are you going to be able to repair?
We're looking at seven of them for 2017, or for 2015, for replacement. We're looking at several others for repair, rehabilitation. One of them is possibly a very large rehab project, and then several of them are smaller rehabilitation projects. We haven't identified a number right now, because a lot of them are going to be smaller projects. We might spend $15,000 on maintenance on one structure. But we're going to be doing a whole bunch of maintenance projects on several different structures.
But right now, your budget's indicating you're going to be replacing four bridges?
Seven.
Seven.
Replacements, yes.
Any other questions for DJ? Okay. Thank you. We deferred this from last week, just to give the opportunity to the township to speak to this. So if somebody from the township would like to speak, you'd come to the microphone, identify yourself, and give your address. And you might have to spell your name, Mr. Kasowski.
Good morning. My name is Dave Kasowski. That's K-A-S-O-W-S-K-I. I'm the current chairman for Grand Meadow Township. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to come in and discuss this bridge today. We, we are probably one of the two townships in Minnehaw County that do not assess a mill levy to our constituents. And so our budget is very small. So we're very conservative with our funds, and, but we do have the philosophy that we want to give the best roads for the money that are the dollars we have to spend. So when it comes to this bridge, one of the biggest and most important concerns we have is safety. The structure is 85 years old. If we were to have that bridge replaced, it would benefit our township and would allow more people, buses, and would also allow for our farmers to haul across it, because right at this point in time, we cannot do that. Also, another concern is for emergency vehicles. We, the farming community around it, if we would have a farm accident, to get any fire or emergency vehicles to that area would be very difficult. I would, I would hate to have an accident and have them come down that road and discover they can't get across that bridge, and so they would have to go around. And I feel that if any one of us had one of our family out there, we would feel the same way. When they, they did the study on that bridge, we had a meeting about that with the county, and we talked about using box culverts or any other means that would be more inexpensive than replacing the bridge. We were told that there is an environmental impact with the Topeka Shiner, and this is an issue that obviously none of us have any control over. The Corps of Engineers basically mandated how this bridge needs to be put in. We realized there's some extra dollars for that. So as a township ourselves, we have experienced maintenance, increase in maintenance on that, simply because approaching that bridge to the east, because it's narrow, it's hard to place the gravel. We, we spent extra time doing that. And, and then, of course, due to the narrowness of the bridge, snow removal is very, very difficult on that bridge. When, when SEH Inc., the engineering firm, performed the hydraulic study, they said that the 41-foot span is not large enough to handle a watershed that comes down that west bank of the Skunk Creek. Well, we as a township have also experienced that, because we always have excessive water running over the road. Well, what we end up doing then, at that point in time, is we have to hire outside contractors to pull the roadbed back up, plus we normally will always lose the gravel that's on that road. So that's an additional expense to the township that is already strapped due to our, due to our finances. So this can occur normally in the spring, but we have had some big rains in the summer that have caused the same exact issue. So we have township residents that farm on both sides of that bridge. We have some of them joining us today. These farmers have traveled out of their way to reach their fields. The weight limit on the bridge, as well as the narrowness of the bridge, with, can't, it makes it impossible to cross with any kind of equipment. And not only that, we can't haul any product across it either way. So if they're going to the field to plant, or going away from the field, hauling product away from the field, they can't do it across that bridge. With the bridge replacement as planned, it would open for, up for an increase in traffic, traffic and a decrease, decrease in additional miles needed to transport on the bridge. The majority of the farm equipment cannot pass through that bridge. It just will not fit. Farm equipment doesn't move that fast. And if any of you have been involved in the farm at all, hey, whenever the rain clouds are coming and you need to get to your field, that's going to be, that's a great deterrent. So the Hartford elevator, we talked to Monty Schrader, and they perform a lot of custom application in that area. And he has to route around that structure all the time, which means he has to end up running his application equipment down the tar road. That's very, very hard on the equipment, and it's very, very hard on tires. So he's got, he's got an added expense there. Along with that, they send nurse equipment with it, semis and water trucks and different things to, to fill up the, the product. That also has to be routed around that bridge. So since the load limit and the width of the structure doesn't allow Monty and his operators to use that road, even with the nurse trucks, that's an extra expense to him. We've discussed the bridge with the UPS drivers. And Ron Sunby has that route. I talked to Ron myself, and he says that he is well aware of that structure. He always slows down, has to be real careful going across it. And, but he does deliver packages on each, each side of that bridge, so he needs to use that bridge. Also, as a township, our experience with construction contractors, they'd indicate that if we delay replacement, we're going to be probably looking at a 5% to 7% year, per year cost on completing the project. Along with that delay, it's anticipated, I would anticipate, the decay of the bridge would probably take it down from a six-ton to a three-ton. As Commissioner Kelly stated at the last meeting, a three-ton bridge cannot even be crossed with a Denali. So, and since that's the case, we certainly can't expect a three-quarter ton pickup, or trailer, or anything to pass over that bridge. That means that Monty and his applicators from Hartford Hiller would still need to continue to go around that bridge. Ron and his UPS truck would have to go around that bridge. And our farmers that need to use, will continue to lose valuable time driving around the structure to get to the fields on each side. Then we get to our township lane. It also can't cross the three-ton bridge. So what, what happened there is, is he'd have to come up to one side, and then he would have to back up a hill to turn around, because there is no way to turn around on the bottom, which is another safety concern that we would have at that point in time. And then he would have to deadhead around, because to the north is a tar road, and to the south, we share with Hartford Township, and they maintain that road. So we would basically deadhead all the way around to get it taken care of. It's just another expense to the township. In closing, the township constituents of Grand Meadow and the surrounding area would very much like, very much appreciate a motion and a second by the county commission of Minnehaw to advise, advertise for the bid and to press ahead with replacement of the structure in mention. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kasowski. Are there any questions? Commissioner Kelly?
I have one. Dave, you mentioned six and three-ton limits, but this has got a 15-ton limit, correct?
It's, it's actually posted at six.
It is posted at six now?
That's what the sign says, sir. We did look that up. The load rating right now is a six-ton, 10-ton, and 11-ton, as it's posted today, until the county commission enacts an updated posting based off the 2014 inspection.
And what will it be then? And what will it be then?
I think I left that over at my seat. Here we go. That's the 15-ton, 24-ton, and 26. So Banner Associates has recommended going from six to 15 on that first class of vehicle, 10 to 24 on the second class, and 11 to 26 on the third class.
Which is what, six? Tell me the number of axes on that.
It's, it's more confusing than that. It's, it's the number of.
Never mind, never mind. Don't try.
The single vehicle, the double vehicle, or the triple vehicle. The number of units more so than the number of axes.
Are there any more questions, Dave? Does anybody else would like to speak on this? Brian? If you would give your name and your address, please.
My name is Brian McMahon. M-C-M-A-H-O-N.
Thank you.
And 460-50250, 55th Street. I live at, at that address, which is west of the bridge, and we farm ground to the east of the bridge, which we've been for a number of years now. And because of the posted ones, the signs that we've seen, which frankly, I kind of agree with, because there's holes in the deck, and makes it kind of nervous when, if we have pasture at that, at that farm, too. And it's not just the carrying of our crops and stuff across the bridge that we're concerned about. The way it was posted at present, I'd have to use my smallest tractor to carry the feed over to the cattle to feed them in order to cross it what it was posted before. A single tractor at six-ton is pushing it. One of the concerns I had, if, if the load limit would go down on this bridge, was that right now, we are, the bridge to the south, the way that one is posted, we can't cross that one either to go to town with our crops, because that load limit on that one, as it was posted this last year, was too low. And so then we had to go around either to the, to the north, around on the highway. And that is, that's, we call it the Montrose Road. It's the route to Lyons. And with the traffic during harvest time now, the semi-traffic on that is a lot greater, and it's, it gets harder and harder to pull out onto that road with tractors or combines. Because of the approach to the east, sometimes the traffic comes over the hill, and sometimes you have a harder time seeing it. I guess Dave, Dave covered most of the things I was concerned about, too, as far as the safety. And I know there've been, there are times when we thought about turning around, but there is no place to turn around on that bottom. I guess that's, that's what I had to say. I'm glad you're considering this. I hope that we can get the job done. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Brian? Brian, if the bridge were to be replaced, it would help to keep you off the highway?
Yes. That's good. And also, I'm, I'm on the Hartford elevator board. And the, right now, when they come out of town, they do, they come down gravel as much as they can to avoid driving on the blacktops. And this would give them a route without, the, the road to the south has a hill on it plus a bridge that they have issues with. That the hill is hard for their equipment to climb, and then bringing their supplies out, the water tanks, the fertilizer trucks and stuff. They also have issues with climbing the hills, too. So I, that makes it, the choices, unless the load limit is raised on that bridge, too, maybe it is. But.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brian? Does anybody else from the township that would like to speak? Is there anybody that wants to speak in opposition to this bridge? There isn't. Any? Okay. Back to the commissioners. Do you have any other questions for DJ or for people from Grand Meadow Township? Commissioner Benega?
DJ, with, if this bridge was changed, what's the anticipated traffic count going to be versus the five that currently is?
The, the technical way to estimate traffic changes like that is not something that our office has the capability to do. And, and the analysis that's required is not something that's typically done for township roads, especially this far outside of Sioux Falls. And so it would basically be my opinion, and just from speaking with different people that live out there and that travel around there, I would, I would, and looking at other township roads that we do have, I would guess that it would be somewhere around 25 to 50 per day. But it's really an educated guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for DJ or anyone else? I would look for a motion to authorize the county auditor to do public snores to bidders on this project.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion.
Hope you get a second.
Do I have a second?
Hope I get a second.
Do I have a second?
Today, I can promise that before there were any bridges in the county, the traffic was even less. And, you know, again, our ancestors, just like building the cathedral or the courthouse, they put their dollars into, to making this system, and I think we should maintain it. We can't be sure what's going to happen in the future. I think the argument on safety is, is, is a very good one. I think that, again, there will be more economic development if we keep the system up. Let's face it, if there is no bridge, it might be more difficult to go for a romantic ride in the county. Hit a dead end, what are you gonna do? Can't turn around, I'll just stay here.
Are there any other comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, you know, there's been a lot of talk about load limits going up and down, and, and I think we have to keep in mind that the load limits are gonna increase whenever, and I don't know whether that'd be July or something like that, whenever you put the new, and I don't know who even approves them, but the load limits will go to 15 and whatever the other numbers are. I mean, to me, that kind of tells what the condition of the bridge is. Now, maybe I'm naive about that, but at least that's kind of what I use. My question is not, my question on building right now is not if, but when. And we've got other bridges with higher traffic count and similar situation, and that's, that's where I struggle, is the allocation. And I hate to second-guess what the highway department's doing, but I know they've got, I know they've got their rating system, and I assume that this came up, I don't know if it's a numerical, but it came up as the number two, two bridge to fix in the county. I, I still struggle. It's five cars a day. How it goes from five to 25 to 50, I struggle with that, but again, it's not a, it's not a true science. I still haven't heard anything that makes me want to vote in favor of this at this point. If the, if the load limits on the next inspection start decreasing, then I think we, we immediately get the problem. But for the time being, I, I still have questions as to whether this is the right time to build it.
Are there other comments? Commissioner Benega?
I'm having some struggles, and I understand all the comments that were made from the township, and I agree with those. The issue for me, frankly, is the fact that we're limited by the highway dollars that we have, and frankly, from a economic standpoint, to make the most impact with the kind of funding that we're getting, and the state's frankly not helping very much this year with their legislative issues, that I think that we need to put the money where frankly we can help the most people. I think you do need to have your bridge replaced. You unfortunately have had to live with this for longer than you would like, but I think we have to make the most impact with the dollars that we are allocated, and when we're only doing seven bridges out of 199 that we own, that's, we'll, we'll never catch up unless we try to make a bigger impact with the people that we're trying to serve in the county. So reluctantly, I'm not gonna be able to support it this time, but I hope that it does get done in the near future. I hope you understand that, but we're limited with the dollars, just like you guys are, and that, that's the reason I would make that decision.
Additional comments? Commissioner Barth?
Thank you. I understand your thought there, Commissioner Benega, but I think that at seven a year, you know, if, if this bridge lasted 85 years, and, and if we took, you know, seven times 85, we'd be close to 600 or something. And so, over, as time goes on, as we do the proper job of fixing these things, we will catch up. I think with DJ, who certainly has a greater interest in bridges than, than some other of his predecessors, I think we will catch up, and we will be able to bring all those hundreds of bridges into, into good condition. That's just my opinion, I guess, but.
Comments?
I guess I, I struggle with this, too, but I think that they've made a good case, as far as I'm concerned, too, about, I, I live in that Lyons area, I know what the traffic is like on the highway, I also know what it's like to have a combine pull out on a highway. It is a safety issue. If they can keep those big equipments off of the road, I think that's extremely important. I also look to DJ, who we've hired, who is very good at his job, and has recommended that this bridge needs to be replaced. We could defer it and look at it again in a year. The cost is gonna go up. We all know we have to do this bridge. If you've been out there, and I was about a year ago or a year and a half ago, it's got those great big metal structures on the side, and you can't take anything that's got any length or width across of it, or you're gonna take out the side of the bridge. I wasn't aware there was holes in the bridge, as Mr. McMahon stated, but there's holes in the bridge that's scary, too. So, I guess I'm leaning towards supporting this, just, you know, I, I get you guys' issues, and it's my issue, too, is that the money is a problem. But I think that it's also important we move forward with the bridges that our highway department recommends, 'cause he knows better than I do. Any other comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could, I could make a couple more comments, too.
Thank you.
This structure is on a 12-month inspection cycle. Typically, our structures are on a 24-month inspection cycle. If there's, if there's cause or reason for us to do a 12-month inspection cycle, if the inspector decides that is needed, they put it on that cycle. So, this structure has been put on a 12-month inspection cycle. Additionally, this structure, I'm doing some quick math in my head here, I'm sorry. This structure was originally built as a very stout structure, and so it has a lot of strength. The risk that goes along with the condition of the structure is the reason that we need to replace this now, not later. The inspector is comfortable with moving up the load limits of the structure, because it is a very stout structure, but because of the condition of the structure, we do need to look at replacing it. If this structure was built, I can't think of a better word, but more flimsy, less stout, then the condition rating would be much lower, or the, the load limit would be much lower. But because this is built as a very stout structure, that load limit, load limit is able to remain higher than, than, say, other structures are. The load limit is not something that we should necessarily be basing our replacement decisions on as much as the condition ratings that we have. Our condition rating for the deck of this structure is a two. One is the worst condition rating that we have, and that is because we have holes in the deck. Those, those holes are not economically repairable or able to be fixed, and so until this deck is replaced, it will have holes in it. The superstructure rating is a four, and the superstructure rating, one is, is very bad, eight is, is near perfect, and so the superstructure has a lot of problems. In the bridge report that I have submitted previously, you have seen pictures of that above-grade steel structure that has been ran into. It's missing pieces. It's not connected in some spots. That also is, is not feasibly repairable. It needs to be replaced. The substructure is a four, is what it is rated today, and the abutments are basically falling over. They're failing, and, and they are also in need of replacement. There is no way to repair those or replace those. And so, right now, the highway department, maintenance crews, hands are tied where there are not reasonable repairs that can be made to the structure to make it last longer. We're basically waiting for it to fail. Don't let Minnehaha County be the new example that Beetle County is today. Every conference that we go to, there's a picture shown of a, of a tractor that fell through a bridge. The, the vehicle that went over that bridge right before that tractor was a bus, after the mom let her kid on the bus and watched the bus drive over the bridge. So, don't let Minnehaha County be that next example. The prudent thing to do is to replace the structure.
Any questions for DJ? Commissioner Benega?
DJ, how many bridges do we have that are on a 12-month inspection cycle?
Any other questions? Okay. I have a motion and a second on the table to authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for the project MC 255 BR number 14 for a bridge replacement.
Roll call.
Roll call, vote. Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Hiberger?
Yes. Motion passes three to one. Two, excuse me, three to two. Can't count either.
Well, we have math issues.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is a petition for compromise of lien.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
DPNO number 25594, in the amount of $3,011.15. The lien dates from August of 1990 through 2010. It's all for public defender services. Some payments have been made totaling $99.15. The last recorded payment was in August of 2010. The applicant is requesting release of the lien in full with no payment. The applicant has a salary of just over $21,000, according to his 2013 tax return. It does not appear he received a refund. He has assets of $500, which consists primarily of an older automobile, and has liabilities of over $13,000, mostly for back child support payments in South Dakota and Minnesota. He's requesting release of the lien with no payment due to the burden of his child support payments. The applicant is present, and he may want to say something.
Okay. This is an opportunity for you to speak. You do not have to come to the podium. You can stay right where you are. You don't have to say your name. Just say whatever you want to say in.
I've been, you know, trying, doing everything I can. What I did was in, in 98, she called me and didn't want kidding money. So, I got Sean down in Arizona with me for a few years, and then I just, I was making money orders, doing my thing, and then I moved back up here, and the state of South Florida didn't recognize any of the payments that I made with child support through that. Or the state of Iowa didn't either, because I was trying to pay it through there, because I lived in Warren for a little while. And they wouldn't accept any of that. So, now that's how I got all that back child support, which is fine. I don't have any problem paying it. It was just my mistake of not keeping records on it.
Okay. Yeah, he doesn't have to go to the podium just 'cause he's, yeah, thank you. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do, and the child support, you're, you're saying even though you had the child, you were paying support payments to your former wife?
I was paying her money, yes, so she could keep a car and keep a job. I didn't realize that she was on drugs, and that's the only reason that she went down to the fire department to drop the kid off. And then I, you know, I wanted to take the best I could, you know, and then after a few years, she said she was on drugs, so I gave the child back, and then she went down and filed from day one, in which we were together, and I'm trying to get proof of that from Arizona, from rental agreements and different things like that, but it's all taken so much time. And I don't, I have no problem paying it. It's, and even if I could just get a compromise in like about a year to pay it back would be terrific, because I'm doing everything I can to write all this stuff.
You do get a year to pay it back. How much can, would you speak to that?
Well, I would just remind the commissioner, this is an instance where the applicant is trying to purchase real estate, and so the ability to, to leave this lien in place for a full amount and consider payments down the line is really something that the title company and the bank who's probably gonna finance this doesn't want to see happen. They need a definitive action on this request in order, you know, as they move forward, because they don't want this lien to attach to the property that they're just getting ready to finance. So, that's the reason for him being here.
You'd be, you'd be able to pay it back over a year, but it wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to do it and buy the house at the same time, because they wouldn't let you do it, so.
So, I have a question for you. So, you know, you have pretty modest income. Even if we release this lien, do you believe that you can support buying this home with, with your income?
Actually, yes. I was working at the Roland thing restaurant for six years, and then now I just landed a job with A-Mark Painting. We do all the Arnie homes, and that's the only reason I'm working today, is because we pour foundations in the mall and to keep us rolling.
I, I'm still confused on the child support. Are you saying that you were paying, continuing to pay her child support while you had the child?
Yes.
And how long did you do that? For two years, a year, three years?
About two years.
And this is, this is the basis of the entire?
Back child support.
Back child support?
I've been down there and talked child support several different times, and I'm still waiting on information, and some of the apartment complexes I've lived in there in Arizona don't even exist anymore. So, I don't even know really much to do except for just pay the money back and just be done with it, and that's kind of what the plan is, you know? I have no problem with that.
And that child support does not show up as a lien, is that?
No, there's no lien on the child support.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I'm going to float a motion to approve the applicant's request, and if I get a second, I'll comment further.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second? Dyes for lack of a second.
Madam Chair, I'll move that on payment of half, we would, upon payment of half of the lien, we would compromise the balance.
Can we make it an even $1,500?
Well, I have, I have a resolution for...
50% would be $1,505.58.
That's 50% of what's still owed.
That's 50%. Okay. I have a motion for 50%. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second for 50% on the lien. Comments? Commissioner Barth?
I'd just point out that with homeownership comes property taxes.
Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Do you have any other comments you want to make? I have a motion and a second to compromise DPNO 25594 in the amount of $1,505.58. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. So, we gave you a 50% reduction on it, and you can talk to, Robert will help you. He's coming in the front row, so, thank you. The next item is an opportunity to publicly... This is a time when anybody who is not on the agenda and would like to speak publicly can come to the podium and make their address and name known and speak on their issue. Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Connie Morgan, and I live here in Sioux Falls, 916 South Grandview Avenue, and it's probably an issue you guys don't want to hear, and you may be aware of it already, but you've got a prob, a big problem with parking out here. Two weeks ago, I came up here and I ended up going back home. I couldn't find any place to park, and I can even use the handicap spots and couldn't find any place to park. And I know with your budgets and stuff that, you know, what do you do? But somewhere in the long-term plans, you better start working on this. It's only gonna get worse.
Yeah, I think we know we have an issue. We, we know we have an issue at times. With, there's court cases going on, it makes it worse.
Yeah, and as we continue to grow, so. Anyway, just wanted to let you guys know.
Any other public comment? Okay.
Regular business. Item 10 is consider a motion to approve community supervision policy changes within the juvenile detention center policy. Jamie Gravitt.
Jamie Gravitt, Director of Juvenile Detention Center. This policy will update our current home detention policy. We're moving towards more of a service-oriented type program. Before, it was just mainly monitoring, making sure they were at home, not really digging down and finding problems that we can start addressing prior to disposition of juveniles in the juvenile court. After a model site last week in Albuquerque, New Mexico... court. After a model site last week in Albuquerque, New Mexico, I believe if this policy is approved that we will move beyond the model sites program that they had in Albuquerque by the level of service that we will provide and the attention we can give these juveniles in the community with their families prior to disposition.
Are there any questions for Jamie on the changes in the policy? This policy has been reviewed by your state's attorney's office?
Correct. The policy changes are highlighted and read for you in your material.
I will mention as you're looking at it or whatever that Jamie and I both attended this national, it's a national model site for JDAI, Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiatives that does training. And there was a group of about 14 people from the state of South Dakota that went to this conference as we were discussing ways to move South Dakota and our plans to move South Dakota forward with changes in the juvenile justice. And Minnehaha County and Pennington County are the pilot sites in the state of South Dakota moving this project forward. And we have done great work in South Dakota in reducing our numbers in the juvenile detention center by forty percent. Jamie?
At least. Probably more if we did a new data study, which we're going to be starting here shortly.
These policies just reflect the work that the policy group has been doing with it and the JDC and the people involved with juvenile detention alternatives, the work that we've done. Commissioner Kelly?
Jamie, as we walked in, I asked you about population, and you pointed out some fact. I just, I know it's a picture is all it is of today, but I want to tell us what you have in custody in Minnehaha County.
I don't have this morning's numbers.
Or yesterday.
Yesterday, we had seventeen children in the juvenile detention center. Six of those were Minnehaha County kids. The rest were contract kids from partner counties in the Department of Corrections.
Thank you.
Those numbers have come down from the last, probably five years ago, when we had maybe forty-some kids in there. We keep the right kids in the right place at the right time and keep them home when possible. So, Commissioner Benega?
Jamie, could you explain, you made the comment that this moves you beyond the model site. Could you just give some details?
One of the major changes in this policy is making it to where we will not be returning kids for technical violations. If they violate the law, a new risk assessment inquiry would be completed. If that showed that the kid needed to be held at that time, then the kid would be held. Otherwise, we'd continue to supervise them in the community, or we would approach what we call our pre-hearing meeting team with the violations or the ongoing violations or the, what we feel isn't working in the program to get some guidance from them or seek termination from the program. If they agreed with the termination from the program, we'd take it in front of the judge for final decision. In Albuquerque, they're allowed to lock kids up from anywhere from two to four days for technical violations of the program. The goal is to try and keep kids out of detention. We feel that by putting kids into the detention center on these technical violations, there really isn't a due process system for the child. They don't have a way to disagree with the violation or argue their side of the violation. That way, the way we're presenting to do this enables the judge to make a determination based on facts from both sides.
Jamie, do you want to tell me just a couple examples of what a technical violation was that would have put you in before?
Technical violations could be not charging your electronic monitor. It could be not returning immediately home from school, missing check-in call with the home detention officer. Granted, we weren't pulling kids back in on one of those violations. It was ongoing violations that we would pull kids back in on. But there was never a review by a judge in that situation that was giving them anywhere from a 24 to 48-hour sanction in detention or shelter care. So, we're looking to try and come up with better solutions in the community for consequences. And at last resort, bring it back before the judge for their decision on how they want it handled, whether they want the kid returned to detention or they want us to continue supervising them in the community.
Other questions for Jamie on the policy changes? Seeing none. I would love for a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the county, the community supervision policy changes and the juvenile detention policy book. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Item 11 is consider a motion to transfer interest earnings of $9,871.40 accumulated in the road and bridge fund to the general fund. Bob Letts?
Good morning again, Commissioner Bob Letts from the auditor's office. And at the end of every year, Highway Fund has various amounts in the bank that draw a little bit of interest. And by state statute or commission resolution, all the designated funds aside from agency funds receive quarterly investment interest, interested based on the fund balance and on the amount of the interest collected. In other words, we get interest on the interest as we go on. Historically, after the fourth quarter, the county commission has made the motion to transfer the highway interest to the general fund. This year's highway fund interest totals $9,871.40. If you, the commission, choose to transfer the interest from the highway fund to the general fund, a motion will be needed. If you desire to leave that money in the highway department, no action is needed.
Questions for Mr. Letts?
To make a motion?
What's your motion?
Motion is to move the, transfer the interest for the highway fund to the general fund.
Is there a second?
I'll second, but I want to know what Commissioner Benega thinks.
There's a motion and a second on the table to transfer the interest earnings from the highway fund to the general fund.
I told you last month in December that I'd never bring this up again. So, we're starting a new year. This is the craziest example of trying to raise, it's almost like having a fundraiser for the highway fund or for the general fund by selling off the highway fund equipment. So, I'm definitely not in favor of doing this. I think the funds were allocated towards the highway fund. The highway fund needs the revenue for projects that they're working on. We just heard about bridges that are underfunded. Why we move it from a fund where it originally started and where it belongs to the general fund is a poor practice from my perspective.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Same sermon as last year.
Yes, same sermon as last year. This was, this was something that was done in the past when the highway department had lots of money. And I think that in the last few years, we have a lot of times left the money where it belongs in the highway department. I have a motion and a second on the table to consider transferring the interest earnings of $9,871.40 from the highway department, or excuse me, from the road and bridge fund to the general fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. One to four. So, we're leaving it the way it is because we don't need a motion after that.
No action needed to leave it in the highway fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 12 is consider the following requests from the highway department related to the acquisition and surplus of various pieces of mowing equipment. DJ Boothey?
Thank you, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. I will give you a brief summarization of what our mowing practices are, or what they have been in the past. And I think that's good background for the three items that we have here proposed today, or four items that we have proposed today. Generally, what we have done in the past is, is we have full-time maintenance staff that works on roads. We have a full-time maintenance staff that works on bridges. And we have a full-time maintenance staff that works on signage. And those field personnel are also required to mow the right-of-ways. Our road maintenance staff, which is our largest staff and does primarily our paving, our culvert replacement, they also are responsible for the mowing portion of it. And so, what we've done, we have two large tractors with mower units connected to them. And at three times or two times throughout the summer, depending on, from year to year, two of our staff people from the road crew will go out and they'll mow all of the miles of our road section. It's a pretty time-consuming process. It takes two of our full-time employees off of our road maintenance crew for a large portion of that summer. And they're not able to work on the road maintenance crew. It leaves our road maintenance crew short-staffed. And we have a lot of equipment breakdowns. Mowers are not necessarily the nicest pieces of equipment to work with. They break down a lot. They have a relatively low service life. And if they're not replaced when they're supposed to be replaced, they break down even more frequently. And so, what we've done is, well, and last year, in 2014, we had several complaints that came through, through our office, through the commission office. I'm sure that some of you heard about the mowing issues that we had last summer. And basically, what they were for Commissioner Bender, are, the mowing wasn't being completed on a timely manner. The grass was growing longer than it typically does. And there was a lot of things that came into play with that. Our staffing was pressed because we had a lot of other projects that we were working on. We had a large flooding event last spring, early summer, that our staff was busy doing repairs on. We had a lot of wet weather in the summertime, which is hard for mowing because when the grass is red, it's difficult to mow. And we had some equipment, equipment issues where mowers were broken down on several occasions. So, kind of, the stars aligned, and we got a lot of complaints. And we should have gotten a lot of complaints. And so, what we did was we took a really close look at our mowing operations as a whole and just tried to identify some things that we could be doing better. So, we can not get those complaints. We can provide a better level of service to, to the people that are using our road systems. And so, this is what we came up with. And we've, we've looked at this over and over. Right now, we have the two, or the mowing tractors with the mower deck units. And what we would like to do is participate in a program that is available to counties and, or government agencies, I should say. The state uses this program, and several of the other counties are using this program. It's a program where basically, an equipment dealer leases a brand-new tractor to a government agency for either no money or $1 in our case, or in most cases in South Dakota, the Department of Transportation, I'm told that they actually pay the DOT for the DOT to use their tractors. And I think it's some sort of an advertisement. Maybe if you see a certain brand name of tractor out on the interstate, the vendor sees that as advertisement for them. So, that's how their contract works. So, we have worked with James River Equipment LLC of Madison, South Dakota, and basically negotiated with them a certain number of tractors that we would be able to use for a $1 contract. And we'll be able to use them this year as long as we don't exceed a certain number of hours on each one of those tractors. And so, what we have determined is that we have a certain number of hours that we need to complete our mowing operations for the summer. And if we're only able to use a certain tractor for 150 hours before we have to return it to the dealer, that gives us a number of tractors that we need. I think it's 500 tractors to be able to mow 800 hours' worth of mowing. Or, did I say 500? That would be a lot of tractors.
Tractors.
Five tractors that we would need in order to perform 800 hours of mowing in the ditch right-of-way. And so, James River Equipment is willing and happy to provide five tractors to Minnehaha County for that contract. The mower deck units that we use today are older tractors. They are not compatible necessarily with a brand-new tractor. They are, but it's more of a permanent installation where you're making holes and bolting things, and it's not an ideal situation on a leased piece of equipment. These mower deck units are also not ideal with the way that they operate. Our tractors basically have to drive down into the ditch and up and around obstacles and things like that. And it makes it dangerous for the operator. They're going in and out of traffic. They're going in and out of the ditch where there might be some steep slopes or something like that. So, it's, it's not an ideal operation from the operator's standpoint. A lot of other counties now are moving towards what they call a offset hitch, which is basically, it looks like a trailer that you attach to the back of a tractor, and it mechanically is able to move up and down the ditch slope. And so, that tractor essentially goes down the side of the road, and then the hitch behind them moves in and out and is able to mow around culverts or signs or whatever obstacle that they, they come across. The offset hitch is available for purchase off of the state of Minnesota contracts or the bids that we have purchased off of previously with our authorization through South Dakota statute. The price for one of those offset hitches is $17,441.40. In order to actually perform the cutting of the grass, you need a mower deck unit that attaches to that hitch. And the mower deck unit that, that works for our, our purpose is a Tiger Trail Cat mower. And it is a, I think it's 120 inches, so it's a 10-foot mower deck unit. It has two, two decks that are able to move separately in order to conform to the ditch ground. And it also lifts up if you're mowing less than 10 feet. And so, that mower deck unit is $24,071.10, also available for purchase off of the Minnesota State bid. We have compared these prices to Clay County, or, yes, Clay County, which is Vermillion, who recently purchased some. And these are very competitive prices. And so, we feel that we can purchase off of the Minnesota State bid, should we be given approval to do so, and, and be given good pricing through that bid. Fourth and closely related item is the existing equipment that we have today. Like I said, we have two tractors and two deck units. We feel that we do need to maintain one tractor and deck unit in the event that this program suddenly disappears. We don't want to be stuck with no equipment in order to go perform our mowing operations. And we also would need a backup in case we, for some reason, exceeded that, or came to close to exceeding that 800 hours per year. And we need to use our own equipment to fill the gap, so to speak, to finish up the mowing operations at the end of the year. If we keep one tractor and mowing deck unit, and we surplus one mowing unit, that surplus proceeds would be hopefully deposited into the highway fund and, and offset the cost to purchase the large majority of this equipment that I was preparing for approval today. The way that the surplus statutes work, we would not necessarily be able to take that money and deposit it into our budget for this year. It would go into our account and, and offset those costs, but it would not offset my 2015 budget. We could request a supplement, but it would have to go through the formal supplement process where we advertise and things like that. And, and we likely wouldn't do that, but it's something that we could possibly do if we needed to. So, given that summary, it's our request today to enter into this contract with James River, request for purchase of the offset hitch through the Tiger mowers and the state of Minnesota bid, purchase a mower unit through Tiger off of the Minnesota bid. And if you have any questions, I expect that you'd have some questions about this. I can ask them now. I did forget one thing. The two full-time employees that we are currently using to perform our mowing operations, what we are planning on doing is, is basically keeping them with the road maintenance crew in order to be able to perform their normal duties, and then hiring a single seasonal summer intern person and, and having him operate, him or her operate the tractor units, and basically mow from, from June through into September constantly, 100% of the time, rather than have two guys go out on three different occasions and mow, let's say, four to six weeks at a time. So, with that quick summary, I guess if you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Are there questions for DJ? Commissioner Barth?
Tiger Corp has a plant here in Sioux Falls, don't they? And are they the manufacturer of some of this equipment?
Yes. They do manufacture equipment, and then they also contract out with a Canadian company that manufactures these hitches. And so, I don't remember the name of that hitch. Schulte? Schulte is the name of a Canadian company that builds hitches. And so, like a lot of industry, they, they basically subcontract... And so, like a lot of industry, they, they basically subcontract their, their hitch unit to be constructed by this company, Schulte, out of Canada. But, but we would be purchasing from a Sioux Falls company through a State of Minnesota contract.
That's nice.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Did, did you say in this offset hitch that as they move along, it's like an iRobot vacuum? It, it senses an obstacle and moves around it, or?
No, it's operator-controlled.
Oh, okay.
It's not automatically controlled. It's, it's operator-controlled.
But the tractor stays in the lane, and the unit moves this way, is that?
Yes, yes. The, the tractor basically stays along the side of the road. He, he could drive down or up or whatever, but, but he's supposed to stay up on the side of the road, and then using the controls in the cab, he operates the hitch to move into the ditch or back up onto the road.
Commissioner Barth?
I have a question for Kirsten. I guess if I was signing a contract for a dollar to rent tens of thousands of dollars of equipment, I'd be worried. Does this look okay?
This looks okay. There are legitimate business reasons why a dealer would want to enter into this sort of agreement to get limited depreciation on some units at a nominal cost. So, it meets with my approval legally.
And liability on the tractors is not an issue?
No, not an issue.
We, we would list them as insured.
Yep.
Are there any other questions on this lawnmower issue? I think we all know we had lawnmower issues last year. I actually had tasseling corn about two miles from my house in the, on the edge of the road, so you know that they were struggling last year to keep up with their problems. I'm going to go through these one at a time. The first one is to, or do we want to do them alone?
Yeah, let's do it separately.
Okay. The first one is consider a motion to authorize the highway department to enter into a lease rental agreement with James River Equipment for five tractors at the cost of $1. Is there a motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. The second one is consider a motion to authorize the purchase of one Tiger offset hitch for
I'll make that motion.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item C is consider a motion to authorize the purchase of one Tiger Trail Kit, Trail Cat mower for a cost of $24,071.10. All the, is there a motion?
There is.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Are there questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And item D was consider a motion to declare one tractor, 1111, has surplus property for sale at auction. Is there a motion?
There is.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJ.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 11 is an update and status report of the 90th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson of the Commission Office. I've got comments about a few new bills that have been introduced since we spoke last week. I know that Mr. McFarland also wanted to speak with you on a few bills regarding his time up in peer last week. So I will run through the, the new bills that, that I've added to the memo since we spoke last, and then turn it over to, to Ken. The first bill that I would refer you to on your memo is House Bill 1081, and this is one that got a lot of attention last week. It's a cleanup language bill regarding counties and county commissioners. The, the thing that raised a number of eyebrows last week was there was a section repealed regarding reimbursement of travel expenses. And, and this is not for, for county officials. This is not doing away with reimbursement for county officials for travel expenses. It's just a cleanup in statute, and that, that is also covered a number of other, in another place in the statute. And there were, there were three different sections that were, were cleaned up regarding county, counties and county commissioners. That's, that's one of the bills I wanted to bring to your attention. There is another bill, 1106, an act to establish the rights of municipal, county, and township officers in cer- certain decision-making processes. And, and basically, this clarifies how you, as elected and appointed officials, may receive information. Comes out of an incident a number of months back about visiting a, a location or gathering information away from the commission meeting setting. And, and this just clarifies your ability to, to do that and gather all pertinent information available in your decision-making process.
Robert, who brought that forward?
That, I don't have the bill in front of me.
Okay. Was it the association?
Ken may be able to speak to that. It was just dropped.
Okay.
So it hasn't even been assigned.
That's fine.
Does this mean I won't go to court anymore?
The municipal league took the lead on this.
Oh, municipal league, okay.
But they coordinated with the county commissioners' association, et cetera, as far as including us in that.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, that one has not even been assigned to committee, and obviously, we'll, we'll watch that one closely as it moves, moves forward. I'm scrolling down mostly to the end of the memo now to, to mention a few other new bills. Senate Bill 78, an act to authorize counties or medical providers to recover inmate healthcare costs from third-party insurers. And, and this requires medical providers to at least attempt to collect payment for, for medical services provided by any insurer that may be available for individuals in custody before claiming that as a county expense. Again, that's scheduled for a hearing tomorrow, has not, not been heard yet. Senate Bill 79, an act to revise certain provisions concerning the manner in which county wheel taxes are imposed, and essentially would give counties who do choose to impose a wheel tax, the ability to exempt the wheel tax on trailers. Scheduled for hearing tomorrow. Senate Bill 81, an act to revise, require persons convicted of driving a vehicle while under the influence of alcohol, drugs, or intoxicants to pay certain county costs. And this would imply, impose a $50 fine if you are convicted of a DUI offense that would go to the county general fund. Again, this is a recently introduced bill. It's been referred to Senate Local Government Committee, but there is not a hearing scheduled at this point. And those are the, the bills I wanted to bring to your attention. I'll be happy to answer any questions I can about these or any of the other bills we've covered previously, or I would turn it over to Ken, who spent all of last, last week in peer, working on legislation.
Okay.
Commissioners, it was a pretty, it was a pretty hectic week in peer last week. But I do expect that it's going to get even more frantic, especially from here on out. The deadline for filing the unlimited bills by legislators was 5:00 yesterday. From this point on, you can still file bills, but there's, you know, legislators are limited to so many that they can prime and, and sponsor. So last night was the deadline for that. Of course, one of the big things that I spent time on is, and I've had a lot of questions, not only from our own legislators, and that from, but you folks as well, and I just wanted to make, it's concerning Senate Bill 73, the juvenile justice bill. And I just want to make sure that you understand some of the information that I shared, and will continue to share with our own local delegation as that bill goes through. You know, of course, obviously, lots of people have been asking, what is the impact of this on counties? And I want to assure you that the, all the officials I talked to at the state level have indicated that the intent of Senate Bill 73 is to improve things on the back end of the system, and not to have a detrimental impact on counties. And if there is, there's some reimbursement mechanisms to make that happen. One of the things that's a little different on this one, as compared to the adult CJI bill that was passed a few years ago, is the fact that because we've been involved in the area of juvenile justice for a number of years, we have a fairly robust data collection system on how the system, how the JDC is currently being used, and that. And so one of my main focuses last week was to make sure that our own legislators and members of the state knew what was some of the data that we had already collected, and where we were going to be concentrating some of our efforts. And I just wanted a chance to point those out for the record for folks, some of the data we'll be looking at. And Jamie mentioned that some of it today, on how the center is being used. But as we look at the data for the center...
You have to read these charts from right to left.
Yeah, she's switching it for me. Aaron's going to switch it. But, the main focus I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is that we have approximately, when we started our JDAI project and our reforms, we were averaging 11, almost 1,100 admissions into our secure detention center when we started this project. 1,100. We've knocked that down into 2014 to 591. We've reduced the number of bed days that we've used in the secure detention from almost 14,000, to now we're just almost 4,700 bed days in the detention center. We've dropped our average daily population in the center from almost 39 kids a day in secured detention, down to 16 and 1/2 kids per day within the center. And embedded within those numbers, and I think these are some key components, embedded within that population is the number of kids that are there, 6.3, that are there because they're serving a sentence in the JDC. There've been a court-ordered sentence there. And so, as you can see by this, we, we've, we've managed to slightly increase that, you know, through the implementation of our project, but we've held fairly steady. The big drop that we've seen, and this is another part of the bill, is utilizing the center for probation violations. That was a key component when we wanted to institute our reforms. And we've dropped from an average of 8.38 kids per day, whose most serious offense is a technical violation for probation, down to an average of one a day. That's there for that reason. So because we've been able to drop those kind of numbers, and because we've been able to reduce the amount of our bed days and our admissions, we've been able to take our resources that we were spending on the secure side, and we've shifted and implemented a whole lot of reforms for non-secured detention alternatives. And those include, as you well know, things like home detention, electronic monitoring, the evening report center, the reception center. And those numbers are on the backside of the report I gave you last week, but right now, for the home detention, we have 21 kids a day on that system. And for shelter care, we're averaging 3.3 kids a day in shelter care. And then you can see how many kids there are for the evening report center and reception center. The point that I made while we were out there is that we've been so successful, you know, in, in reducing the use of our secure detention, and we want to continue to make sure that we maintain this kind of success that we've had. You know, so with the implementation of the new juvenile bill, we want to make sure that we maintain and improve on the work that we've done already. And to that end, you know, we, we pledge that, yes, we are going to work with our local judiciary and the state to make sure that we maintain these kind of numbers, because if we, if we don't, if we see these numbers start to go up dramatically, or this number start to go up dramatically, and that, that means that we have to shift resources from our non-secure alternatives back to the secure side, and I don't think anybody really wants to see that happen. And that, and these, and I'm pleased to say that the state officials, you know, pledge that, yep, that's certainly their intent, as they look at the Senate Bill 73. And they, you know, I'm taking them at their word that they'll be there with us to help maintain these kind of numbers. And so with that, you know, we've, we did speak in support of Senate Bill 73, fully recognizing that we'll be monitoring this. And luckily for us, we have the data right now to show where we're starting and what impacts might hit us in the future. So we have the base data in place to help monitor that. So...
With the reduction in numbers, we have seen no increase in crime. And I think that's the big thing. The kids that are in there now are the kids that, that need to be in there. The kids that don't need to be in there are at home or somewhere else.
And one of the things that, you know, we're, I think it bears to, we need to point out and embarrass saying, is that we've been able to achieve these kind of successes, you know, with the reduction in the use of secure, with, with reduction for probation violations, and holding steady on the number of kids that are sentenced there. We've been able to do that in the face of rising geographic population. So, you know, we've still been able to maintain these numbers, and I think that's something to be proud of. So...
Madam Chair, I'd like to comment on this too. Ken testified on Senate Bill 73 in, at the legislature, and that went well. But we also did talk to numerous legislators about this, and I think, having been here through this process, boy, it is wonderful. But clearly, you know, the, you know, we just had a young person incarcerated at our JDC awaiting trial, convicted of stabbing somebody and then incinerating them. And so that person's in a cell for four years. Do we want to put someone who has skipped school in the next cell? You know, we're, we're reserving the secure detention for serious problems, and we're using these other things to, to try to encourage kids to, to behave. Anyway, I think that's, we made that point quite a bit, too.
Any questions for Ken?
There, the transportation bill, and that, you know, there is a bill that was introduced from the summer study, and that, and that it designated approximately $100 million, and that's to be split, 25 million to locals, 75 million to the state for road and bridge work. It's a wide combination of things. It had an increase in the excise tax, an increase in the fuel tax, a new tax on diesel, extending the part-time registration, you know, or temporary registration for certain farm vehicles from three months to a year. And then a, an increase in the license plate registration, et cetera. All that was designed to raise $100 million. As you know, the governor's office is, is coming out with a counterproposal that reduces that amount to more in the 50, $55 million range, and that, with some adjustments in excise tax, gas tax, registration fees. But there's also a provision that he's coming up with, with a $1.20 per $1,000 worth of valuation that you could raise outside of the property tax limitation for highway and bridge work. And that, I haven't seen that that bill has officially been filed yet. I expect that it will be shortly. Of course, the association is looking at, both, will be looking at both bills with interest, and the association will probably come down on the side of, look, any money that's coming into our local coffers for road and bridge work is a good thing, and they will be looking at hitching their wagon, they're the one that shows right now the most promise for legislative passage, and that. So they're all, all of those bills are still in play right now. And that may be something that's going to hang on, I think, towards the end of session before that finally gets resolved, and which one they're going to go for. So...
Any other questions for Ken? Okay. Thank you, Ken.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I'd just like to say, I spent the week out in peer, too, and I must say, I've never been in the process of finding sponsors and prime sponsors, but it, it was hard work, and kept us going all day. Lots of talking, lots of standing around. I did get sponsors, both prime sponsors and regular for the TIF bill, which should hit at some point, even though the municipalities are opposed.
We just want a spot at the table.
Okay. I guess we'll go on. The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
Last night, we had the planning commission meet, and we are still seeking applications for another planning commission... for another planning commissioner. We have a vacancy right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Have you had any applications?
We have not gotten any applications.
Has it been advertised?
Yes. And people have even been called up and asked to come, but nothing yet.
I think it's incumbent upon us to maybe, each of us should be looking around and seeing if there's somebody we think would be good, and if there are, we should encourage them to apply, because...
Scott Anderson is here right now, if he has any comment on that.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, County Planning Director. I had a call actually this morning from a citizen that has expressed some interest. I directed them to prepare a letter of interest, attach their resume, and mail it to the County Commission Office, and so you may be getting that person applying. Back on December 31st, I was corresponding with someone via email who had expressed interest. I gave, basically told them the same information, please contact the County Commission Office. So, there has been a little bit of interest out there, but I'm, at this point, directing them to the County Commission Office. You can collect the information, and then, I think what Commissioner Kelly indicated is also a good idea, that if you know of people that you may like to encourage to apply, that would be great, too. And just so we're all aware of it, it's open to anyone that lives in the county. That could be people that live in a small municipality, it could be someone that lived in Sioux Falls, or it could be anyone that lived in the unincorporated area as well.
Okay.
You know, we had 20 people, I'm sorry, almost 30 people apply for the commission slot. Now, if you assume that is an interest in county government, perhaps we should just send the card out to them or something that says, we do have an opening, if you're interested in government, this is an opportunity to get very involved, and I would think out of those 30, we ought to get one or two that have an interest.
Any other liaison reports? Is there any new business? Scott?
Yes, Scott Anderson, again, Planning Department. I just wanted to let everyone know, and the public as well, that on this Thursday, we are having our Envision 2035 Task Force meeting at 3:30 in this room. We have completed the last three chapters of the Envision 2035 Plan, which was the future land use, the transportation, and then the implementation chapter of basically setting goals on how to implement the plan. I have made sure that the chapters are now on the internet site. Commissioner Bender asked me yesterday where they were. I thought they had been placed on there, but I checked today, they are on the website, so the public can go and review each chapter of the proposed plan. Certainly, those meetings are always open to the public. Also, at the meeting on Thursday, we are going to have some general discussion on how we would like to present the plan to the public, if we would like to have more open houses, or if we have one large open house right here in the commission chambers, or if we just take it to the Planning Commission. Because under state law, the implementation of a comprehensive plan is much like an ordinance. It goes to the Planning Commission, there's a public hearing, then we set a public hearing in front of this body, and it would be adopted as well as an official document of the county. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions. It's taken a little bit longer, but I'm really happy with the product. I think it's very, it's a nice, it's a very well-put-together product. I'm very happy that my staff had time and really took the initiative to get that done. It's a forward-thinking document. I think it's very progressive-looking, so I think you'll be happy with it, and I'm hoping the public will be happy with it, too. So, if you have questions, you give me a call, you can look at the chapters, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Kelly?
Would it be possible to do a joint Planning Commission and Commission public hearing? I mean, could we, I don't know if we can do it legally, but if we could have a joint meeting, you only have one...
Oh, with the Planning Commission.
Well, with the Planning Commission, yeah.
No, under state law, it specifies it has to be before the Planning Commission, and then another hearing before the County Commission.
That's required.
So...
Any other questions for Scott?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any old business? Okay, I would look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for litigation and personnel.
That's my motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.